Good morning. Call a meeting to order. Welcome you all to today's meeting. Tuesday, May 21st. Silence your phones if you haven't already done so. I'm going to recognize that we do have a quorum of the entire commission here and ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Onto our routine business. I'd look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Blumberg, second by Benega. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on then to our consent agenda. Consent agenda is kind of the routine busi- the routine business, for lack of a better term, of the county. And if anybody from the public would like to comment on it, now would be your opportunity. Any commissioner want to pull any item off the route- off our consent agenda? Then I'd look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
In a second, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blumberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on now to our regular business. First item is a public hearing to consider declaring the property legally described as tract one, Opeland addition, in the northeast quarter section, fifteen T one oh four N R fifty W, a public nuisance and enact South Dakota codified law twenty-one ten six. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. Scott Anderson, planning director. And today I am asking you to declare a public nuisance on the property located at two four six three five, four hundred and seventieth avenue. This is approximately one mile west of the Dell Rapids exit and then a half mile south and are generally half mile south. This is a situation where we've had reoccurring violations on this property. Last year, we contacted the applicant about the accumulation of inoperable vehicles and other junk on the property. And we visited the site. We received a complaint. We visited the site and found that there was a lot of material, scrap metal, unlicensed vehicles. We contacted the applicant, worked, gave them opportunity to address the nuisance. Has not been fully addressed or addressed. And so we are asking that you declare this a nuisance. We have reached out to them this year to have the property cleaned up and no activity has occurred to satisfy the nuisance ordinance. So I do have some photos for you and then I'm here to answer any questions. So if we could go through the photos, this is the site property. You can see there's the large- a house with a large addition. There is some accessory buildings and you can see the, what I would say is a nuisance. There's vehicles littered throughout the property. There's behind the north accessory building, there's a large junk pile where they're scrapping out metal perhaps and storing stuff. So if you can continue on with the pictures. So this is from last year. There's a sequence of, this is from the October of last year. And now this is from March when we initially contacted them to have it cleaned up. And then this is from April. This is from May. This is from last week. And then finally, I guess we were, I was out there yesterday and the applicant has removed about four vehicles on the south side of the house, sort of where that driveway loops down and but hasn't fully addressed all the other issues. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. Asking that you declared a nuisance. The property owner has been provided, sent a notice that we'd be having a hearing today by certified mail. They've signed for the certified mail and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kipley.
Is this, is this a business operation or residential or just what's the status of the site?
So the property is owned A1 agriculture and it is a residence.
Okay.
Now, the property owner does have business interests outside of this county. Moody County operates a salvage yard.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
All righty. This is a public hearing, so we do take proponents. If anybody would like to speak in favor of declaring this a public nuisance, now is your opportunity. All right. Anybody opposed? Typically, that would be the property owner. Anybody opposed to declaring this a public nuisance? All right. No need for a rebuttal. I am going to turn it over to the commission then for discussion and action. If I may, I know Moody County declared this business owner had a nuisance a few years ago. It just appears like he may have moved the problem into a new county. And I'm in favor of taking action immediately to clean this up. This is totally unacceptable. Four vehicles and I bet there's forty vehicles there. I mean, it's, if this was my neighbor, I wouldn't want to drive by it every day. I wouldn't want to look at it. Way beyond the, in my mind, what is acceptable. As a property owner, you buy property. You know what you can do on that property and this is definitely not one of the uses. So I'm in favor of taking immediate action to clean.
That'd be my motion.
I'll second with a comment.
Go ahead.
I'll just note that we had our planning and zoning meeting last night and we had a similar situation on a, maybe a smaller scale in the Lyons community in the Northwest. And I think I would just note that staff is very reasonable in these situations, gives people plenty of notice, gives them some time. So it's not like we're springing this on this landowner and they've had notice, had the opportunity to appear here. But I will support enforcement in this case.
Other comments? All right. Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blumberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. We now have an update from the Office of Public Advocate.
Good morning, Julie.
Julie Hofer, Director of the Office of Public Advocate. Just going to start with a brief overview of our office. So the office was opened in January of nineteen ninety-nine. The purpose of the office was to reduce costs that were going out to court-appointed private attorneys. So our office provides legal representation to low-income people who are charged with crimes or otherwise qualify for court-appointed counsel. The primary function of this office is to represent clients with whom the Public Defender's Office has a conflict of interest and has stated thus reducing the number of private attorneys that must be appointed by the court to be reimbursed for, by the county. And so a couple of the issues that I pointed out to be examined for the coming year, for two thousand and five, caseloads, as you could, can see from my annual report, did not increase along projected rates as I originally anticipated. They remain pretty stagnant. They were, the office's closed and open files remain relatively steady when comparing fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. And at this point, the office currently has approximately, at any point in time, fourteen hundred and fifty open cases between the seven attorneys within our office. Looking at cost savings, I believe that the office provides, our expenditures for two thousand and twenty-three totaled one million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars. But during that same year, our office closed two thousand, two hundred and sixty-five cases, which equals an average expenditure of approximately six hundred and thirty-five dollars per case. Speaking with court administration, the total cost of private attorneys for two thousand twenty-three was one million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. These are now submitted through vouchers, so we don't have total case numbers. But according to Mr. Tennis, if you go through, the total number of cases handled by private attorneys usually averages twenty percent more than the submitted vouchers, which came to an average of one thousand twenty cases handled by private attorneys in twenty, in two thousand twenty-three at a cost of one thousand, three hundred and seven dollars per case. That equals a cost saving, average cost savings per case between our office and the private attorneys of six hundred and seventy-two dollars for the county. In terms of further cost savings, I am not requesting any new positions this year due to our numbers not increasing, due to my feeling that the office with the personnel that we have is able to handle the number of cases that are coming in at this point in time. The only requested increase I have for the two thousand twenty-five budget is an extra thousand dollars, is to increase Westlaw to a thousand dollars per month, which just is due to negotiations and so that is going to equal out to be about a thousand dollars extra per year. Another cost savings that's going to go into effect on July first, we had a meeting last week discussing this and that's House Bill ten thirty-nine, which is the inmate cost defense, the defense costs. This bill states that the Department of Corrections must pay council fees if the case originated from a criminal offense committed by an inmate under confinement in a facility operated by the Department of Corrections. We have the men's state penitentiary here. So my office and the Public Defender's Office get the majority of those cases. At this point, I have an open attempted murder case. The Public Defender's Office has a co-defendant that's set to go to trial in July. We anticipate that those costs will be reimbursed to the county by the Department of Corrections. And we do have several other cases that originate out, many assault cases that originate out of the penitentiary. Recently, there was the, they call it a riot, but the kind of uprising over the tablets, which led to about eleven people being charged. I anticipate that the county will not have to foot the bill for that, that they will be reimbursed for those attorney fees by the Department of Corrections, which is a good thing. Other things that I have done and the office has done, I've continued to work with the safety and justice challenge to improve services for our clients, safely reduce incarceration, and attempt to make the system run more efficiently. I will continue to participate in these programs, which include, but are not limited to, the biweekly in custody review team where we look at low-level offenders in on a lower amount of bond to see if they could be released safely out into the community with some sort of supervision. Many agencies are a part of that group to include the Public Defender's Office, State's Attorney's Office, representative from the Police Department, from the Sheriff's Office, from Alliance, and also from probation. And then we have also run the warrant resolution court to attempt to reduce, and we did reduce the number of warrants that are out there, which does save the sheriff money in terms of having to go out and serve those warrants and having people booked into the county jail. Issues on the horizon that I see coming up, not for two thousand twenty-five, but, but beyond, that could add to costs, as I mentioned last year, court is now held in the jail courtroom and part-time at the JDC, part-time at the courthouse. Once court is held full-time at the JDC, while more efficient for JDC staff, that does take time away from our attorney who handles the juvenile cases in terms of drive time between downtown here and going to the JDC, especially if court is going to be there full-time. You take a two-minute walk and you turn it into a twenty-minute drive and that puts some time constraints on that attorney. So that's just one thing to look for in two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, when the new JDC is up and running. The other concern that I have going forward, the Supreme Court has approved adding two more circuit judges to handle the cases within the Second Circuit. This may lead to additional courtrooms running at the same time, which could add to our concerns of being double or even triple booked, which may result in a factor in a request for a new attorney position in two thousand twenty-six, but not next year. So in conclusion, we're mindful that there may be revenue shortfalls and I'm attempting to minimize expenditures accordingly. I don't have any significant projects planned for two thousand and twenty-five. If you have any questions about my memo or the annual report, I'd be happy to take those from you.
Questions for Julie? Looks like you're off.
All right. Thank you very much.
We do take public comment on all our agenda items. Anybody here from the public that would like to address the commission on the Public Advocate's annual presentation? Moving on then, we'd look for a motion to authorize the chair to sign a purchase agreement between the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office and Forsight Labs for jail overwatch sensors. Good morning, Warden.
Good morning. Mike Mattson, Warden of the Minnehaw County Jail. We are requesting a motion to authorize the chair to sign a purchase agreement with Forsight Labs for twenty wearable devices that aid in monitoring the wellness of detainees admitted to the Minnehaw County Jail. We continue to see people being admitted into the facility that are highly intoxicated from alcohol and narcotics. These individuals are at a much higher risk for, from a medical wellness perspective. The proposed wearable devices track biometric signs such as pulse, skin temperature, oxygen saturation, and movement. The devices will alert both medical staff and correction staff when any biometric falls above or below the threshold, affording an advanced warning that the person is in a medical distress situation. We've secured funding for this technology through partnering with the South Dakota Attorney General's Office. They support this purchase and have provided fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars towards the purchase. We applied for and we were awarded thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars from opioid settlement fund through the Department of Social Services that will also be spent towards this project. And lastly, we have existing funds in the jail's medication-assisted treatment program through DSS and they've indicated that this purchase would qualify for use of those funds as well. The funding that we received will fund this project for two years, so a two-year pilot. Hopefully, we can make an impact with this, better, better medical monitoring for these people in addition to the regular physical checking that we do. And I'm hoping that we can prevent some medical, serious medical problems with these devices. With me today is the sheriff.
Morning commissioners. As you know, we're accredited through the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. So we're at a high level of medical care in our, in our jail for the inmates that we house. We take in about twenty thousand people a year into the Minnehaw County Jail. Many of them, as the warden has indicated, are under the influence of drugs, in particular, drugs like fentanyl, opioids, methamphetamine, and alcohol as well. Sometimes they're mixed up. Sometimes they've got co-occurring disorders that they're also self-medicating with. So we have high-risk people coming in to a setting that is not a hospital. When we saw this technology as it evolves, it made good sense to us. I appreciate the partnership in this effort with Department of Social Services. They've been great to work with, to help us with the funding. But also in particular, I reached out to Attorney General Marty Jackley and the DCI Director Dan Satterley and said, is there any chance we could use some of that drug asset forfeiture money that comes from drug dealers and use that to help pay for this technology to try to deal with people that get into medical distress because of, of the drugs that these people have been pushing? And both Marty and Dan said they thought it was a good fit. And after some research, they came up with almost sixty thousand dollars from asset forfeiture money to help the county with this technology. So we're pretty excited to get it in place. We think it will, it can save lives. It can reduce the number of medical emergencies or at least allow us to get on scene faster and to treat that person. So as someone is brought in and intake, they'll be able to identify individuals that are at high risk. Or sometimes it's, it's that they're still on the drug. And then sometimes it's that they're, they're coming off the drug and that they're, and they can deteriorate quickly. And so we'll be able to use this technology on people we identify. Could also work for, for elderly cancer patient that we may have in our custody or someone, we've had individuals in hospice in our custody. So there's a wide range of use that this has. Director Satterley is here also from the DCI. So if there are any questions for myself, the warden, or Director Satterley, I don't, Dan, do you want to come up and say anything or?
I would, I would. Thank you, commission. Dan Satterley, I'm the Director of the South Dakota Division of Criminal Investigation and a proud resident of Minnehaw County as well. We, on behalf of Marty Jackley, the Attorney General, we really wanted to partner with Sheriff Milstead and his staff. Not so concerned about what they have going because they have a whodunit machine here, is to see what impact this may have statewide. We have, across the state, particularly in corrections, very low staffing and shortages of staffing. If we can enhance that with the help of technology and we can show that through, what we're looking at is a test module, but I know sheriff will be successful. See what the results are where we can maybe spread this across the state just to help some of these folks in these smaller counties, I think, is one of the aspects that we looked at. But traditionally, it's always been a good partnership to partner with the sheriff in Minnehaw County. But if you have any questions, I'll be available. Thank you.
All right. Questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, I just have a practical question of is, what type of sensor is this? Is this like a bracelet is what I've kind of picked up on and just-
Correct.
Basic functionality?
Yep. So it's a, it's actually an ankle strap, security grade. And the sensor, it gets embedded into that strap, so they can't remove the sensor. They can't take the strap off. So it's going to be affixed to the person. They, the battery life is something ridiculous, but they're rechargeable. So, yeah.
Yes, that answers my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
Less of a question, more of a comment. I just really thank all of you for bringing this idea forward. I think it's a testimony for how much you care for the people that are in your custody, that you desire to make sure that they have the best medical outcomes possible. And I just think that it's what taxpayers look for, collaboration between a lot of governmental entities, thinking creatively about how we could provide services better. I think it's a great investment and I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
Yeah, if, if, if this technology will prevent even one in custody death, then it's well worth it, in my view.
Can you break it down for me, Warden, at the, is it fifty-nine, six sixty-six plus the thirty-six, five to go against total contract of a hundred and fifteen thousand is?
Correct. And then the remaining funds will be covered with the medication-assisted treatment funds from DSS as well.
Okay. So nothing's coming out of the general fund. Just curious, why isn't the jail medical contract or this part of the jail medical contract is, seems like they would go hand in hand or is it totally non-related?
It's not related. Our, our medical contract is a pass-through contract. So I mean, they could have made this purchase, but then they would have passed that cost to the county. This approach, I think, is more reasonable from a, from a budgetary perspective. If, if we can secure outside resources to pay for these things, then I'm going to make that effort to do so.
It just amazes me that you need twenty of them. Is there that many people in custody at one time that you need to have twenty of these? Wow.
The frequency is high, but this is multiple applications. This is our target population. The person that comes in on the intoxicating substance. But just yesterday, we had somebody in the facility with stage four cancer. I would like that device on that person just so we can have a little bit more monitoring on them. If we have to put somebody into a restraint chair, the RAP device, I want this device put on that person. That happens fairly frequently. So the, the devices that we use will, that we get will be used.
I think, I think to the warden's point too, you take a Monday, it's not unusual that we're bringing a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five people over to court. And so that means over the weekend, we've, we've got that many people that have been fresh booked into jail. And of that, many of them are under the influence of drugs or alcohol.
Commissioner Kipley?
One more question, just since it sounds like this is a pilot of sorts that might expand. What are the measures of success? What will you be looking for six months to a year from now? What, what data are we going to be tracking to, to help us measure success?
I, I can, I'll speak to that a little bit and I obviously will want to know how many medical emergencies are identified, right? So our physician, Dr. Jeff Luther, will set the thresholds, whether it's the oxygen level, the pulse, the respirations, whatever it may be. And when it goes above or below, it alerts staff to that. And so number one would be, how many of those alerts do we get where the person was in medical distress? A second thing would be, what was the end result? A third thing would be, what would have happened if we would, would have not known that, right? What, what could the end result have been? So I think that's how we have to measure it because as, as Director Satterley said, this is something that they're looking at. Imagine a rural jail where you have no medical staff. We have medical staff on. We're probably, we're probably one of maybe two jails that has medical staff on full-time. And, and so this will allow even a sheriff's deputy or something to respond to a medical emergency in a jail where they have no medical staff, so in a rural jail. So I think it's a perfect pilot because we do have medical staff. But if they're in sleeping in their cell and they're, and they're coming down from using fentanyl or they took too much fentanyl, we won't know that they're in the process of dying. But this kind of an ankle monitor could tell us that they are. And so I, I view it as a pretty important technology that we should, you know, learn more about and consider for statewide use.
I would, I would add to that. It's a pilot program for us, especially for statewide. And to tell you that there are jails in South Dakota that are looking at grand opportunities just to get video cameras in the jail. And so, and, and we're working with them to get the right solution. A video system in the jail is better than what they have, but now you have to have somebody monitoring the video. Where this is more of a passive monitoring system. And so if it is successful on the data that they're saying, how many medical emergencies have we had during the year compared to what we were before? I think we can easily sell that to some of these smaller, instead of investing their money in a, a video system or something that's just not practical with, with shortages in personnel.
Commissioner Benega?
Yeah. I'm just making an assumption, but I want to make sure that I'm correct. Is if there's an individual that's high-risk in the jail and they've been, or in the process of heading to court at some point but are released to go home, that medical device doesn't follow them to their home, correct?
Correct. No, they would be removed before they get released.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blumberg?
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to echo Commissioner Bender's comments and appreciation for the work on this. But also I was just curious, is there any anticipated increase in personnel that will be needed to be able to respond? Or does that look from your-
No, I, I'm not anticipating any additional staffing needed for the use of this technology.
Okay.
Well, this is going to enhance what we're currently doing with our staff.
All right. I'm looking for a mo- All right, I'm looking for a motion. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Look for a motion to approve an adjustment to the Highway Department's summer hours and authorize the Chair to sign Amendment Number Two to the Highway Union Contract. Good morning, Steve.
Morning, Commissioner. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. We're looking to adjust our starting and ending time when we're on our summer hours to accommodate this. We need to amend the Highway Union Contract with our AFSCME Union. We're looking for your support to approve this amendment.
Questions for Steve? Public comment? All right, Commission action? I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second, call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the Highway Department to purchase slip lining for culverts through Union County's culvert PVC slip lining bid, under South Dakota Codified Law 518A223.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. Two weeks ago, I was here looking to buy metal culverts off the Beetal County contract. Similarly, Union County has a contract with subsurface zinc to do culvert lining. The pricing was pretty good on their contract. They've agreed to allow us to purchase culvert lining off of that contract. We're looking for your permission to proceed with purchasing culvert lining under that contract.
So this is in addition to the culverts that we bought last week, or is it?
This is completely separate. This is a fiberglass liner that is installed inside existing culverts. So you don't need to dig the road up to do the culvert replacements.
Okay, Commissioner Bender?
If I remember correctly, maybe last year was the first time we did this. Did you have good experience? Were you able to use it last year?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bender, yes. We used it on, I think, on 10 culverts last year. They all worked better than expected. It is a proven technology that's been out for 15 years. And I was just glad we're able to start using it here, so we don't need to be excavating our roads anymore than we have to.
Thank you.
How many culverts do you think this will, or are we anticipating on using this for a quarter million?
It's probably going to take care of about 20 culverts.
Are these strictly county, or does that include the township culverts?
Mr. Chair, these would be strictly county road culverts.
Okay. Any other questions? Public comment? Commission action?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion a second, please call the roll.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Steve. Our Public Defender's Office Annual Presentation. We have both public advocate and a public defender, so. Morning, Tracy?
Morning, Mr. Chair. Tracy Smith, Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office. Our intent is to provide a brief overview of our services and to highlight a few of our efforts over the last year, as we continue to work towards our goals for 2025. Over the last few years, coming out of the pandemic, we have really honed in on our collaboration opportunities and looked for initiatives where we could have a voice in addressing caseload congestion, identifying barriers that have resulted in disproportionate jail stays and caseload congestion. We have focused our efforts on training, building leadership, working on collaboration, and promoting employee well-being. As a team, we have focused on addressing efforts where triaging is not really the best way to help our clients. And that old mantra that we always hear about, at some point, you have to stop pulling people out of the river and go upstream, and really look at where we have to figure out why people are jumping in the river, and figure out the best way to come up with effective solutions when it comes to addressing public safety. We're still seeing a lot of cases where trauma, serious mental illness, substance use disorders are the reoccurring themes that we're seeing in many of our cases. I looked at Mr. Hager's presentation that he did a week or two ago, and he spoke about the hard work that their victim witness assistants are doing. And many of those clients that they're seeing, or victims that they're seeing, are also the same individuals that we're seeing as our clients. And he was referencing, depending on the day or the week, the same victims that they're seeing in domestic violence cases are also the addicts that we're seeing, who are charged, and the individuals that we're seeing with mental health needs. And people who are victims of fentanyl overdoses are also the people that we're seeing, who are charged with substance use disorders. And some of the people who have distributed those dangerous drugs are also the people with substance use problems. And they're also the ones who are typically people who themselves are on probation as well. If you could go back one slide, please. As Julie has already referenced, Minnehaha County manages indigent defense by having the Public Defender's Office, Office of the Public Advocates, and Appointment of Private Counsel. As she's already indicated, appointing private counsel is very expensive. Cost of private counsel is $115 per hour whenever private counsel is appointed. Next year, it's anticipated that it will go up to $120 an hour. It's much more cost-effective when cases can be handled in-house by either our office or Julie's office. Last year, we closed 151 cases where individuals were facing 25 years or up to life sentences, which in a smaller county would be catastrophic. These cases are the most expensive, they're also the most time-consuming, and they take the most time to process. Last year, we closed 8,136 cases, and we argued four cases in front of the South Dakota Supreme Court. If you could go on to the next one. Public defense is anyone who's facing incarceration. That is what we know as public defense. We handle juvenile cases, appeals, involuntary commitments, probation and parole violations, felonies, and misdemeanors. We also handle all the problem-solving courts in Minnehaha County. Mr. Hager spoke about the annual rate of increase of being about 2% per year, and that is reflective of our office as well. It worked out to be about 2.34% per year. We also handle all of the appeals in Minnehaha County. Once the statewide office gets underway, it's our understanding that the appeals will be taken over by the statewide office. We also handle all the DOC cases, which currently the Attorney General's Office handles those cases. So once that is taken over, that will provide some relief for us, the same way the Attorney General's Office has been handling those cases for Mr. Hager's office. Again, the cost per case, four billable hours, will be going up to 120 per hour, and those costs will be reimbursed back to the county, hopefully, once the Department of Corrections is taking care of those costs after July 2nd. If you could go on to the next slide. Thank you. The procedure for requesting counsel is individuals who are not able to afford their own counsel have to fill out an application with the court, and the judge is the one who determines who qualifies. We are not able to accept cases until a judge has determined that they meet the financial qualifications. A lot of people believe that court-appointed attorneys are free, and they are not, unfortunately. And everybody who is not able to pay for the cost of their attorney actually has the right to a hearing to determine whether or not they have the ability to pay. And the law allows the county to affix a lien to their property if they're not able to pay. I just wanted to touch on our organizational chart real quick. There has been some slight adjustments over the last year. We do have each division that is handled by a supervising attorney. Kim Klein is one attorney who handles all of our alternative courts. That has been a change from last year when we appeared in front of you. She handles the DWI Drug Mental Health Court and the Veterans Court. We've changed that to have one person instead of having four attorneys. It just got so difficult for us to handle our regular caseloads, and also making time for our schedule to fill out the applications, go to the jail, handle the violations. So having that one attorney where their sole priority is handling the problem-solving courts has made it so that that is her full position doing that. We also have seven paralegals, one investigator, seven legal office assistants, and one office manager, for a total of 16 support staff. As you know from our budget request, we are asking for two additional investigators. We were so grateful for the addition of one investigator last year. And the State's Attorney mentioned last week that they have 31 support staff and how valuable they are. They have three digital technicians, three, seven victim witness assistants, and three investigators to help do the legwork for, in addition to all the law enforcement officers that assist them investigating their cases. Similarly, when we depend on support staff with having over 8,000 cases pending, we're pretty limited on what we are currently able to assign to our one investigator. We've limited what he can do as far as working on current cases, and we limit what he does to only the most serious cases in the office. And in the end, I believe that that is what has led to it taking more time to process particular cases. Can you go on to the next one? Thank you so much. Our goals for last year were to prioritize non-incarcerable programs that respect the dignity and humanity of our clients, and to expand efforts to encourage employee well-being, prioritize retention, enhance leadership training. We worked on the warrant resolution program. That was a pilot project that we had that allowed people with low-level warrants to turn themselves in, get into court, get attorneys, and get them taken care of right away. By doing that, we allowed the time during the day to be reserved for the most serious cases. We also established in our office what we called the Amicus Crew. It's an informal group that meets monthly to discuss how we can improve morale, what community events we can plan, and then just puts employee well-being at the forefront. And I feel that that has led to better retention within our office. We've also changed how we process competency cases. That was an issue and led to longer cases where competency restoration, I think I mentioned it in my annual report, where sometimes individuals were staying in jail or taking up to 16 months to process going through their restoration program. We did our part by having one paralegal who keeps track of how long they've been in custody, how long they've been working through their program. Judge Hauman is taking, where all those cases are assigned to her. She has regular review hearings. There was a recent federal opinion that came out here in South Dakota that ruled that every person has a right not to be detained more than four months between the date of the competency restoration order and the date that attempted competency restoration begins, unless the state can show a good reason specific to that individual why it should not take more than four months. And that can't include the state doesn't have specific resources, or there are no bed dates available. We also took an active role with the statewide study of indigent defense services in South Dakota. And we worked with the Sixth Amendment, which was based on the recommendation of the statewide indigent defense task force. The results of that study should be available this fall. Current challenges, with the increase of violence and serious offenses, it has taken us more time to process those cases. Technology has definitely become much more advanced. Mr. Hager spoke about how much he has appreciated the work of his digital technicians and the work that they do, particularly as it relates to phone and digital discovery. And that also comes with the assistance of the Police Department. We too need assistance and appreciate the legwork that our investigator has helped us with, and is one of the reasons that we are asking for two additional investigators. When it comes to breaking down that information, reviewing the discovery, doing any follow-up work and collecting more videos, whether it's Walmart, whether it's a police station, there is additional work that needs to be done to process these cases. By working on these cases quicker, it does save money, reduces the length of time that individuals are in jail. Based on current workload, nationally-recognized standards, they do recommend six investigators based on our current staffing needs. And we recognize that that's just not an option with where we're at. It's just not feasible, and so we're requesting two, so that we can assist in keeping jail costs low and reduce court delays.
Can you repeat that, that six versus two, what was that again?
So based on the number of attorneys and staff, they do recommend one investigator for every three attorneys. We recognize that that's just not feasible with where we're at right now. So we are, if we request two more, that would bring us up to three. We currently have 27 attorneys.
Okay, so one for nine, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you go on to the next one, please? So our current strategies and commitments. Chris Miles is our adjunct professor for the Indigent Defense Practicum. We have offered it for many years now, and it's usually at capacity. They usually have to turn students away. It is an excellent recruiting tool for our office, and we love having the students in our office. Each fall, right now, we have also just begun our summer internship program, and we have student, four students right now taking part in that. We love having them. It does ease up on the attorney's schedules in the summer. They help with research, brief writing, reviewing discovery. We also have several employees who take part in the LSS mentorship program, which allows us to go read, play games at Terry Redland, some of the local schools. We're also part of several collaborative work groups to improve our community. Jason Koystenin helps organize the NAMI Walk and organizes a team for that. We were also part of the Indigent Defense Task Force. I was part of that committee. Now Betsy Doyle is, who is our chief deputy, is also on that commission. She was selected to serve on that. And that was one of the recommendations that came out of the task force, was the establishment of that commission. We also are a part of the problem-solving courts in diversion. To wrap things up, Mr. Hager referenced a few cases in the valuable work that all of us are doing within the judicial system and for Minnehaha County. And I think it was brought up that 70% of the county's budget is with regards to public safety. When we talk about fiscal responsibility, it is important to recognize that public safety is more than just arrest and incarceration. The three individuals that were referenced specifically, I wanted to note that spent more than 1,500 days in custody for pre-trial arrests before their cases were finally resolved, prior to being sentenced. And that was just waiting for, in jail, so that their cases can be finally sentenced. Case processing really should be a top priority when it comes to public safety, efficiency, and fiscal responsibility. For those three cases that were referenced, I believe the cost at one point that we've talked about, the cost to hold them in jail, I think it's about $80 a day. And that's just to prepare for trial. That's $120,000. When you add up the pre-trial detention days for those individuals, that is a significant amount of money. We also went through and added up all the jail, the pre-trial detention days in our office for those people that were found either not guilty or received hung juries for the most serious charges that they were charged with since the pandemic. When we started going back to trial in October of 2019, and that number was in excess of over 5,000 days. These were people who sat in jail waiting for their trial, waiting- These were people who sat in jail waiting for their trial, waiting for their day in court, as we would say. Multiplied by that cost per day of about eighty dollars a day, that was about four hundred thousand dollars. These were people that did not go to the penitentiary, did not get sentenced. So when we talk about investigators, doing the work, case processing. Not to mention those people who have lost social security benefits because you are not eligible for social security benefits in jail. Not to mention housing, which is a big issue with safe home. Not to mention the trauma themselves once they get out. And the cost uh the trauma of being in jail with the violent people who need to go to the penitentiary. Family, children who are away from their dads or their moms, the employment opportunities that have missed. And the staff, our staff, the state's attorney staff, the corrections officers. Who all of us are working tirelessly to help these individuals. That is the impact that is huge. That is when I, what I mean when I say at some point we have to stop pulling people out of the river. And we have to stop triaging and we have to stop, all of us, and we have to go upstream and figure out what's going on. And we have to stop measuring our success by arrests and incarceration numbers. And we need to work together, sit upstream a little bit, and we need to figure out why people are falling in the first place. And so. With supporting our office, with allowing us the time to process, to look at these cases earlier on. That's what I mean when I say we can have a more contemporary, humane, evidence-based equitable equitable system. And um I hope you will support our request um for the twenty twenty-five budget for the two additional investigators. Um I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Tracy, questions from the commission?
Commissioner.
Chair, I just had one uh point of clarification for both uh you and Jul- Julie uh reported that uh effective. July second, a new law goes into effect that parts Department of Corrections cases will not be paid by the county anymore. But will it go to either of your staff or will it all only go to private counsel and then we get reimbursed for that?
Our staff will still handle those cases because we have the Public Defender's Office. But we are, have been in discussions with um how we will address um. Payment um to seek reimbursement from the Department of Corrections for those costs.
So in a sense, it it still falls within your caseload for you and Julie as applicable, but. This the cost will be reimbursed by the state somehow? Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Thank you. Any others?
I guess my only comment is um. As liaison to your office for nearly eight years, the the faces or the face of your office has changed a lot. Just the number of support staff, which I think is a good thing. You know, to ask for more attorneys is the most expensive solution um to. Overwork staff, I guess, and I know that your attorneys are out in the evenings, knocking on doors, looking for people. Doing private investigator work and private or an investigator should be doing the work that the attorneys are. So I I'm always looking to. Put the right people in the right place, basically, and the attorney should be doing legal work, not investigative work. So um I congratulate you on that. Now, the question came to my mind, one to three, why why two additional? And you know, based on standards, and I'm not a big, well, national standards guy, but. Um you know, you'd still have one for every nine attorneys, basically. I don't know if it's the right number or not, and I'm supportive of, you know, considering. Um the investigator requests, so I appreciate you pointing out. How your office has changed and you're putting the right people in the right places. So thank you for that.
I would just say with our divisions, um we've, we have a violent division, a non-violent, we have misdemeanors, and then we have a civil division. With the increase that we've seen in juveniles, um and the fact that when juveniles commit crimes. The goal is to transfer them back when they commit violent crimes. There's a lot of additional work that goes into transfer hearings. Being able to put more effort into um doing that legwork, school records, talking to the family. Being able to do that work early and not just having um our investigator work on adult violent crime. It it would help those types of cases too. Thank you.
Commissioner Blumberg.
Um thank you. I was just curious, um you mentioned the investigators would help with case processing with your department. Are there any other avenues that you see that we're working on or anything else coming up? Um in the next couple of years that you would like to see to help assist with the case processing?
I I would like to see more with the warrant resolution program. I do see that as something, um allowing those low-level. Warrants, being able to use those to have more time in the day. I do also think um the additional judges, I I know that. Is more work for our attorneys. There's only, you know, Julie talked about being double booked and triple booked. That's that's hard on our staff. But I I I do think those requests are needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody from the public like to comment on the Public Defender's Office presentation? All right, moving on then, consider a motion to approve or deny. The twenty twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license renewal applications. Kim, we have about twenty, how many?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, all righty.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kim Christensen at the Auditor's Office. Um we have received the um renewal applications for the twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-five um licensing period for the um businesses listed below. For their malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license. These applications, um each application has been submitted. And the renewal fees have been paid. There are no concerns or objections reported by the State's Attorney's Office, planning and zoning. And Sheriff's Office. The renewal fee for each entity is three hundred dollars. With one fifty being remitted back to the S- um South Dakota Department of Revenue and one fifty staying with the county. And the good news is all of these organizations have passed the last compliance check.
Questions for Kim? Have there been any violations on any of these twenty-seven?
Not, the last one, we we just did one this spring and everybody came back and passed.
Good, okay. Any public comment on these renewal applications? Turn it to the commission for action.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blumberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign an amendment to the agreement fixing county payment for medical screenings on the first day of care of persons. On South Dakota codified law twenty-seven A ten. Holds between Minnehaw County and Avera Behavioral Health Center, Mr. Greco.
Yeah, good morning, Commission, uh Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. So uh I would request your approval of the amendment before you this morning. This is an amendment to a contract that um was assigned back in December of twenty twenty-two. Between the county and Avera Behavioral Health. Uh the contract that actually covers two uh significant portions of um our our business with them. First is first day of care costs um and also medical screening. So the subject of this amend- of this amendment is only medical screenings. We're not looking to make any changes to the first day of care costs. But as background, when that uh when that agreement was originally um agreed to back in twenty twenty-two. There were, there was a provision in it to review data from twenty twenty-three regarding the lump sum payment for uh medical screening. So within that original agreement, uh it was agreed originally that we would pay a hundred thousand dollars payable and for um quarterly installments. Uh to Avera because at the time there wasn't a high fidelity on the number of mental health hold, medical screenings that uh we would see under the contract. Uh so throughout the course of twenty twenty-three, data was collected. Uh earlier this year, uh myself, Carrie Benz, uh and others in coordination with Avera Behavioral Health did review that information. And did find that the hundred thousand dollar lump sum payment was um was low and should be increased. Uh we agreed um as staff uh with Avera to look at an increase to one hundred forty thousand dollars for. Calendar year twenty twenty-four with a two and a half percent escalator going forward each year thereafter. Uh so what I'm asking for today is for you to approve this amendment. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for Tom? All right, public comment? Commission action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blumberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. We now are at the opportunity for public comment on any non-agenda item. Anybody here like to address the commission?
Good morning, Mr. Chairperson and Commissioner. Suffering from the uh plants doing their thing. Anyhow, I'm not here to impress you with my attire. I recently, a week ago, had surgery on my left shoulder, right shoulder. I'm learning how to be left-handed and you dress yourself so you can conveniently get into and out of things. I want to present to you, and I don't know if the original piece of art that I gave the county commission still exists. They used to have it in a room back off the main meeting room. Uh this was done, and I think it's the first commissioned piece of artwork done by. Minnehaha County Commission. Mike Schirmer, whom you may remember that name, and I don't know who all did that, but that was at the time of. Dick Flynn and Els Hospice. And this was painted on the back wall of the commission meeting room. It's on the second floor. You got off the elevator, straight ahead, there was a door just a little to the right, and that's where the commission met. And I I attended several meetings there amongst other places. I think this is the fifth or sixth place the commission has been meeting. It'd be interesting to do a history of the mo- the mobile Minnehaw County Commission. This, as I said, was commissioned by um. I'm gonna set it up so that you can see it. There it is, that's, that is a smaller rendition. The original painting done by Stuart Brings Plenty, one of the characters in Sioux Falls. Was the size of that screen. It was painted on the plaster. The commission decided to move rooms. They could not take it and relocate it because it was painted on the plaster. They made the error of not painting it on canvas and then applying it to the wall. So this was done by Stuart. This is his rendition of The Falls Before Contact. And uh so what did they do? Modern Press came in and did a of an extensive photographic. What would you say, recording of it, and they printed it in, I think, four color offset. And uh so these are not readily available or you can find them. I would imagine this was done probably. It was before I went on the commission, so that's going back to the early eighties. So this is commissioned by the a commissioner. I don't know who all paid for it, but it was a big deal to save it for future generations. And it is something that I think, maybe I'm in error, should grace the walls of the Minnehaw County Commission. Because this was something that they did as their effort to perpetuate arts in the community. So with that in play, I will leave this with you. And you uh can find if someone to do whatever needs to be done in the mounting and framing and that sort of thing. I'll keep the bag. It's a little wet this morning. It's good for the corn and beans, but not for a guy with a highly absorbent. Jacket. So um there also ought to be a little bit of a history that goes with it. To tell the people who look at it that this is something that was done. It's hard to say this, but forty years ago, maybe longer. So it is part of our county history. And it should be a thing that we show a little bit of pride in. We tried a second effort. I was painting that blank wall that's over. Where you take the turn coming around past the courthouse, you go to the left, you go to the Colosseum, you go to the right. And you go over toward the Levitt. There's that big blank wall. Three commissioners were in favor of a mural. Well, there was one that wasn't, and it turned out it was like three commissioners trying to stuff a cat in a bag. The fourth commissioner was holding and the cat didn't want to go in the bag, so that was abandoned. And I won't tell you anymore about that story. Anyhow, thank you very much. And uh stay healthy, warm and all the rest that goes with it, and if you have to have this done. You spend a lot of time sleeping.
All right, moving on to commission, anybody else for public input? Welcome.
Yes, Dan Kipley, uh Sioux Falls. I just wanted to uh take this opportunity to thank uh the commission and the over six hundred people that are employed by the county. Over the last couple of months, I've had the opportunity to meet with uh many of the elected officials and department heads and other employees. I've had the opportunity to do a ride-along with the deputy sheriff. Where we did make one apprehension. It wasn't a bank robbery, it was just a a stop sign violation, so. It isn't gonna go down as uh the most memorable afternoon, but it was still very interesting. So I met with the auditor Anderson, treasurer Swanson, registered deeds Halsey, state's attorney Hager. Sheriff Milstead and his entire team. I spent two hours with them one day. Learning about the the department, as well as made stops at the highway department. Director of Equalization, I spent time with Bill Hoskins at the Heritage Museum, Tracy Smith at the Public Defender's Office. Julie Hofer, public advocate. Learned a lot of things from Carrie Benz at Human Services, got a rundown from Carrie Devera on Human Resources. Spent time last night at the planning commission meeting, but also met privately with Scott Anderson to learn about the planning, zoning and parks. Got a rundown from Monty on the IT, Mark on the construction of facilities projects. And then also met met with the Mr. Greco at the administration. So what I want to stress to everyone, and you all know it, is uh the county employees are doing a fantastic job. The next thing I want to stress is the county commission is doing an excellent job. The one thing that I did not bring today as a prop was I was gonna bring a pair of shoes about this big. Because that's what it's gonna take to fill Jean Bender's shoes. The no- number of times I met with people that they said that Jean had been their liaison at one time or another. Was uncountable as far as in the amount of time that she's taken to learn all the different departments that she's been ha- helping. But also the empathy that she shows and for the entire county. And the ten years of service that she'll have by the time she retires, she needs to be commended. And I thank you, Jean, for for spending that amount of time with the county. Also, it's just a to uh, when I have been talking to people within the county. They do uh also uh share the amount of compliments, which when I ask them about it. Uh they always say that they only want to do uh yell and scream when they have something to complain about. But when things are going really well, they don't say a lot, so I think that's one of the things that we as a commission uh moving forward can try to figure out a way to uh. Toot the horn of the quality employees that we do have. So keep up the good work.
All right, anybody else for public comment? Moving on then to commission liaison reports. Who's first? Who's first? Commissioner Bender? Benega?
Ye. I'm just gonna say who I've met with, and I'm not gonna go into details, but over the last couple of weeks, I've met with HRC Group, which is the Housing and Resource Group. We all went, most of us were able to attend the bus tour event, which is an amazing tour of the county, showing all the things that are going on in the county and amazing businesses that are frankly not identified sometimes, but certainly should be. I had a meeting this week with, I guess it was last week, Fair Board. We met this morning, Commissioner Bender and I, with the JGC budget issues and priorities and policies that are being discussed, and also met with the Highway Department. So I'm glad I'm retired from my real job.
Any others?
We, yeah, got to go on the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance Bus Tour, which was, as always, very interesting, getting to see the different businesses that are showcased around the county and the growth that's happening. I also had the opportunity to attend the Safety and Justice Challenge Conference with several of our staff from the county and the city. That was a good opportunity to continue to learn more about what we can do to help with incarceration. We have several juvenile justice collaborative work groups that have been meeting in the last couple of weeks, getting together again as a large group coming up. So I'm looking forward to those conversations and finding out what improvements and what areas of focus we have coming up. Then I just also wanted to mention that county offices will be closed on Monday as we observe Memorial Day.
Commissioner Bender.
And I just have a couple of quick updates as well, along with the Safety and Justice Conference that Commissioner Blainberg talked about. We did have our local meeting for Safety and Justice Challenge. We continue to do some work on possibly applying for their capstone money. I think we've got a good program that we're working through, so that will likely be coming to the commission next month. And we are also going to be hosting some folks from Arizona who have had a lot of work with triage and other programs that we've been working on, and so it'll be great to have them in town and to see what more we can work for them. That's been delayed a couple of times, and so we're looking forward to hosting them as well. We've got the block parties that are starting next month, and I think that there's gonna be information available for folks that are interested in going to those. Those are always a great opportunity to get to meet some people. And anybody who's driving around 229, see that the work at the Juvenile Justice Center is underway. It's always a little bit of the diceiest time of construction when you're going under the ground and seeing what's actually down there compared to what you thought was down there. And there've been a couple of challenges. The weather's obviously been a little challenging in that regard as well, but they're really working hard out there, and progress is being made.
Mr. Chair, I just had one more additional comment. I kind of touched on this from planning and zoning last night, but we do have, it stemmed from a pretty basic rezoning request in Lyons, and that just had a few community members come out and say that it was premature to give them a rezoning from residential to commercial, if I recall correctly, until some things got cleaned up there. So the, I think we had a couple of my fellow planning commissioners that were apt to grant the rezoning, knowing that we'll still have a conditional use permit, bite at the apple to clamp down on this. But the complicating factor was there was gonna be some change of hands of ownership, like this was, the rezoning was part of a condition of sale. So really what we did was we kicked the can down the road three months, so a deferral of that item. But just as we, seems like this is the time of year in the spring when we kind of unveil some new public nuisances and trying to crack down on them. So I appreciate the action we took today, but we might have another potential one coming down the pike, so just a heads up on that. But I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Myself, last Tuesday, as Ben mentioned, we did the bus tour for the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance Wednesday morning. Since I'm the membership advisory chair, I'm also on the executive committee for SMGA. We had an exec meeting Wednesday morning from seven thirty to eight thirty, I guess. A lot of discussion about the scope and what SMGA is doing and how services can be better provided to the smaller communities. They have representatives that work with all the smaller towns, and there's actually requests coming in from communities outside of our MSA that would like maybe other support or support services. So a little discussion about that, which in my mind is all a good thing, because that just means the SMGA is doing a good job and being recognized by all the communities outside of our area that, hey, we got a lot of good stuff happening, and how can we be part of it? So, and then we had, that afternoon, we had the membership meeting for the board, membership board, in Lenox, and that went well, probably twenty-five, thirty people in attendance, some good updates from the Governor's Office of Economic Development. I didn't bring my notes along, but just some general information, I guess. But, yeah, that was my Wednesday last week, on top of all the other fun stuff we do. Any questions of anybody else or any other liaison reports?
I forgot to mention, the Leaders of Tomorrow had a graduation last week, so they are officially at over seven hundred graduates in our community. And just a big thank you to the sponsors that help fund the justice impacted cohort. We have a great group of graduates that are really on a good trajectory after finishing that class.
Excellent. Commissioner Bender.
And I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Blainberg, because she was part of that graduating class, so it's very kind of you to spend your time doing that. I know you learned a lot.
I did, thank you.
All right. Non-action commission discussion. Seeing none, we are going to, I'd look for a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of South Dakota codified law, 125, 2134, and 6.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Going to executive session next door? It'll be in here, okay? In about eight.